Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure Kevin's status, but the breakout.
Sure. Just get that ready. All right. So we'll call Chester Cindy Lignar.
Morning.
Good morning. Clinton, Michelle Bienvenegna. I'm gonna get this right. I don't see her. I don't see Michelle. Cromwell, Tony Salvatore.
Here.
Good morning. Deep River, Carol Doge Jones. I don't see her. All right. Durham, Brendan Ray.
Here. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome. East Haddam Irene Haynes. She's expected, but I don't see her yet. Yeah, I don't. I don't see her. Okay. East Hampton, David Cox. He's expected, but I don't see him either yet. All right. Essex, Carrie Duquesne.
Morning.
Good morning. Haddam, Robert McGary. He is expected. I don't. I don't see him yet either. All right. We have a lot of late commerce. All right. Killingworth, Erica Tour.
Hello.
Good morning. Lime, David Lam.
Here.
Middlefield, Jim Irish or Bob Yamatino? I don't see Bob. I don't see Jim Irish or Bob, but welcome, David Cox from East Hampton. Middletown, Ben Florsheim. I do not see him yet. Old Line, Martha Shoemaker.
Here. Good morning.
Good morning. Old Sabre, Carl Fortuna.
Here.
Portland, Ryan Curly. Are you here yet? I don't see Ryan yet, but he is expected. Westbrook, John Hall.
Good morning.
Good morning. For the MPO, Joe Comerford, S.R. Trans District.
Good morning.
Good morning. And also from the MPO, Darlene Briggs from Millsix County Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Sam, Bob McGary just joined.
Oh, welcome, Bob. Uh, let's see. We have. We have a number of guests joining us. We have Dan Kylie from Clink. Are you here?
Um, it. I'm taking, um, taking his place. His mother unfortunately took ill.
Okay. So Bridgette, welcome, Bridgette.
Thank you.
We have. We have Noah Carver from Representative Courtney's office. Uh, we also have Julia McGrath from Courtney's office. Uh, we have Lori McElwee, our, um, our mobility manager, our regional mobility manager. Uh, we also have joining us. Let's see other guests. Let me look at the list.
Um, Sam, I can tell you, we have Joel Severance from CERT, Allison Dvorak from Senior Resources, and Erin McBride from Murphy's offices coming in right now.
Oh, great. All right. Well, thank you, Eliza. All right. And I think also Grayson Wright is expected from Connecticut DOT, but I don't see him either. And then for staff, Eliza Lo Presti, Rob Harramit. Uh, we also have Brendan Garrity. Uh, in the office here, we have Kevin Armstrong. Um, we have Margot Burns, Sam Gold, and, uh, and Elizabeth. Uh, yeah, Robinson. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, Elizabeth. Um, and, uh, and we, and we also just had Kim O'Rourke from Middletown join us. Welcome, Kim.
Okay, Sam. Thank you. Public speaking, regional election advisor. Is Carol here?
Yeah, Carol usually calls in. Um, let's see. Uh, I'm gonna send her a text and remind her of the meeting, and why don't we bring, come back to her when or if she's able to join.
Okay. Representative Courtney's office, do you have anything?
Just a few quick updates. Good morning. So, um, first, as of Nov- or October, not gonna speed up time too much. October 1st, um, the Federal Code of Regulations Uniform Guidance has been updated for, um, federal financial assistance, um, which was done for a number of reasons, but in part to, uh, lessen the administrative burden on both grant seekers and grant recipients. They're trying to streamline notices of funding and kind of consolidate the reporting burden. Um, so as you guys are starting to procure using, um, using federal money, if you run into any issues or anything, please let us know. We're happy to kind of help iron out those kinks of that transition. I did send along some resources that can just help everybody get, um, familiar with the new rules. But, um, again, always happy to help. Um, kind of alongside federal spending. Um, I'm sure you all know, but I just wanted to remind you, December 30th this year is the deadline for obligating your American Rescue Pen Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Um, that doesn't mean you have to spend them, but they do have to be, um, designated for service and depending on their further stipulations, depending on the category of the expenditure. Again, always happy to help kind of sort through the guidance on that if need be. Um, one other thing I wanted to flag, and then the rest you can really, uh, you can take at your own time in the update, is the EPA has released a final rule to identify and replace lead pipes within 10 years. And, um, this is good from a public health measure, but I do also know from a municipal perspective that this is a huge undertaking that is both very expensive and very time consuming. Um, and that is definitely something that, um, I am thinking about and trying to brainstorm. You know, what federal resources are there to support towns as they start to go through this process? So I'll keep you posted as I find things on that. Quite to be totally transparent, right now, I don't have any specific suggestions aside from our, our normal, you know, point to the state revolving funds, but that's something that I will be definitely keeping my eye on. Also, under the broadband, uh, umbrella, shall we say, the, um, BEAD program, which is being implemented by, uh, DEEP is, um, in its pre-qualification round for sub applicants right now. Um, I really encourage you guys to go to the website and see if that's something your town wants to participate in. And, um, that is gonna be it for me. We're getting a little double dose of Courtney staff today. So you're gonna be hearing from my colleague on, uh, Noah on elective pay, which I also really encourage everyone to take advantage of, but that's gonna be it on my end.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from Senator Blumenthal's office? Okay, Senator Murphy's office.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Um, just as a general awareness, um, Congress is in recess until after the election. So, um, our bosses will all probably be around even more. I'm in a district, especially my boss. Um, we've been seeing him a lot, which has been really nice for constituents. Um, but other than that, things are a little bit slow in terms of updates on policy and legislation. Um, but, um, two weeks ago, Senator Murphy did send a letter to the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, asking for details on the Department of Transportation's efforts to improve roadway safety. Um, for those, uh, members of the COG that are part of our Regional Priority Council on Transportation, and this is a big, um, thing that we've talked about in previous, um, quarterly meetings. Um, but with the tragic deaths of Connecticut Trooper First Class Aaron Pelletier and conduct worker Andrew Di Monaco, as well as his own walk across Connecticut where he saw dangerous driving conditions firsthand, he expressed serious concern over rising traffic fatalities in Connecticut, and he also requested additional information on specific measures being implemented, strategies to adjust driving, um, behaviors that are dangerous, and how federal and state governments can collaborate to enhance roadway safety. Um, so, you know, this is not even just, you know, people that are in the line of work. It's families and individuals that are being impacted by roadway deaths, um, from dangerous driving. So, um, hoping to get some answers on that, um, and hopefully some federal funds for things like sidewalks and more signage. Um, like I said, he sees it every single year on his walk across Connecticut, the areas of Connecticut that have those gaps. So, um, but other than that, I don't think there's anything, I guess, just with congressional spending. For those of you that are kind of in that limbo process, um, we are operating on a continuing resolution. So those projects are kind of just waiting with that resolution until the fiscal year budget is decided. And, um, on our end, they're in the House now, um, for deliberation. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to our office. We're happy to help. Um, and as always, we have a robust constituent services team. So, um, case work from stuff with veterans, social security, Medicare, all that stuff. Um, don't hesitate to reach out to any of our offices, Congressman Courtney's, ours, and Senator Blumenthal's. So that is all for me.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on, um, direct pay. Bridgette O'Brien, are you, are you sitting in for Noah Carver?
No, I'm sitting him for Dan Kiley.
Oh, Dan Kiley. Okay.
Right.
Is Noah Carver here?
He is here.
Okay.
Okay. So this is the first time I've done a presentation. So if it looks weird, tell me because I, I won't know because I won't see my screen. Let's see. Oh. I can't share my screen.
Okay. Where'd you go?
Coming. Hold on. Um, actually, you should be able to.
Now we can. Here we go. Okay, we're getting business in here.
There we go. Perfect.
Does that look good? Does that look right?
Looks good. Yes.
Phenomenal. I feel so professional right now. Um, thank you for, for letting me speak. I will be very quick. I know that you, you want, want me to keep it to 10 minutes. And as I've learned, elective pay is a very complicated thing, so I could talk for a very long time about it. Um, so I will be very, very quick in, in my discussion of it. Firstly, I want to say that I am not an attorney or a tax preparer. I know that might be shocking to, to know. Um, but I am not. Take, uh, take the advice that is, is talked about in this, uh, presentation with a grain of salt. You know, it does not constitute actual legal or tax advice. Um, you should talk to your financial office and possibly your town attorney should you seek the elective pay. Um, so what is elective pay? Elective pay is a, um, provision in the IRA that allows municipalities to access, uh, clean energy tax credits that were previously available to regular taxpayers, like private businesses, um, and, and, you know, certain nonprofits, to be, um, sought by folks who traditionally do not file for their taxes. Uh, most importantly for you guys, it would be the municipalities. Um, elective pay itself is not a tax credit. Think of it as an umbrella that covers a, a range of tax credits that already existed or have been newly implemented in the Inflation Reduction Act. It is merely a tool for you to, to access what's already out there. It is available for, for the next 10 years. Um, so you have a lot of time to, to really tap into the funds that are available, um, through these measures. Um, in additional, in addition, it is uncapped, so there's a, a lot of potential for a lot of money. Um, there are many projects that it could be applied to, and I'll show you those in just a moment. Um, as a quick FYI, a lot of people call elective pay direct pay. It is the same thing. You can use those terms interchangeably. Um, if you do search direct pay on the IRS's website to get the guidance, though, you will get the wrong information. It will bring you to a tutorial on how to put your, your refund directly into your checking account. So that, that is, that is useful for some things, but not for this instance. So as you can see, there are a lot of eligible credits. Um, and you are looking at the section and then the number and going, what does that even mean? And I can tell you, I'm not even sure what it means, but there are a couple that would be applicable to municipalities, and I've highlighted them here for your awareness. Um, these four cover the production and, and establishment of energy infrastructure. Um, you can think of them as like community solar panels or, or installation of, of, uh, geothermal heat pumps in your, your municipal buildings, or trying to, um, transfer your, your municipal fleets to, uh, electric vehicles and the, the infrastructure that is required alongside of it. Um, of course, your municipality might, you know, benefit from the other sections that I haven't highlighted here. Um, but for the majority of projects that you might see out there, um, these are, are, are kind of what I expect that you would be going after. They are, um, bonus adders that, that go along with the credit. Um, the credit is just about 30% of the cost of the project. Um, and in addition to that 30%, there are certain aspects of your project which might increase the amount of credit that you receive. Um, these aspects can be like, uh, conforming to prevailing wages and apprenticeship requirements from the Department of Labor federally. Um, in addition, there are low income and energy community, um, aspects. So an energy, energy community won't affect anybody who is on this call. There are no energy communities in River COG. However, there is a low income community in Middletown. Um, so should you seek any, um, projects in Middletown, you, you might be able to increase the amount of credit that you get from the IRS. And then domestic content, um, building the project using American Resources by America, all that stuff, um, will increase the, the amount of, of coverage that your credit covers. Think about it in terms of, you know, increasing the percentage of, of your project covered from 30% to upwards of 70%. There's a lot of potential, and it is very, very complicated. I'm giving you just real brushstrokes. Um, I can barely articulate the, 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 the extent of, of how complicated this can get, um, which is why I strongly encourage you to, to seek professional advice should you want to do this. So there is a little bit of a process, and it requires you to first, um, prefile with the IRS. The IRS will vet your project to make sure that it is, um, eligible to receive credits. Um, so after you prefile and the IRS says yippee, you can, you can file for the credit. You will file the tax return, um, which is due four and a half months after the end of the taxable year. Um, and, you know, if you're eligible, you'll get it. Um, it's, it's simple as that. Um, and after you get approved, the, the IRS will disperse your payment. The timeline for payment is a little bit iffy. There is no definitive, you know, you'll get it within a year, you'll get it within six months. Um, it'll likely be dispersed to you after the project is concluded or after you have spent your money towards the project. Um, as I mentioned, there's a lot of qualifiers with, is stuff like the bonus adders that we talked about very briefly. Um, there are also detractors from, from the credit that you might seek. Um, depending on your funding source, the, the amount of credit you receive might decrease or it might increase. Um, I know that seeking bond money from the state will, uh, result in a lesser credit, um, right off the bat. So it'll go from like 30 to 15%. Um, so as you are traversing this process, very carefully review the, the materials, which I will provide to you on the next slide and will be much of a benefit. Look at all these resources. Um, so, and I'm, I'm gonna share these slides with the, the folks at River COG. Um, the IRS has a hub for all information relating to elective pay and transferability. Um, I would strongly encourage you to take a peek at that, um, but it is a behemoth. It is a lot of text and a lot of technical writing, because, boy, does the IRS enjoy a good quoting the U.S. Code. So if you need any help traversing that, I am, I am happy to lend a hand. I handle all issues relating to taxes within our district office, so happy to help. Um, in addition, there's a handout that gives an overview of the general program and then a handout targeted towards the state and local governments who might benefit from this. Um, it talks about exactly what you will need to know in terms of seeking this credit. Um, there is a, uh, nonprofit extragovernmental organization called Lawyers for Good Government. They have so many tremendous resources on elective pay. Um, they have multiple webinars walking you through the minutia of the process, walking you through exactly what you might be able to use this credit for. Um, I would strongly encourage you to check out what they, they provide you. I will say, they're not government affiliated, so of course, take everything that, that they say with a grain of salt. It is, it isn't, you know, government sanctioned information. Um, it is, it is merely a, a nonprofit compiling the, the data that they've gathered. The Lawyers for Good Government will talk about a navigator called the Clean Energy Tax Navigator. That is a very helpful tool for, for you folks, um, in terms of navigating, you know, what credits you might be able to, to get and, and the process, uh, to, to undertake in doing so. Um, I would strongly encourage you to take a peek at them. It does not cover all the sections that you saw in that initial big sections list. It only covers the, the six that I highlighted. So if you are seeking a, a credit that does not fall within those six that I highlighted, the, the navigator won't be useful for you. Um, but for those that I highlighted, it will be very useful for you. Um, and that's about all she wrote. I don't know if we have time for questions. I don't know if we want to do questions, but I'm available. Should anybody want to talk to me?
Sure. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, appreciate the presentation. Does anyone have any, uh, questions?
It's a lot of stuff. It is a lot.
So, uh, maybe you could provide, uh, your, uh, your slides, uh, to the COG, and they can get it out, uh, in the minute packet, uh, for the, uh, CEOs to take a look at also.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll be certain to do so.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, Mr. Share, Carol Conklin, our regional election monitor is on, is on the call now.
Okay, we'll go back to Carol. Carol?
Good morning. Good morning. Sorry for some technical difficulties this morning. Um, so as you know, I'll be brief. The, um, the early voting is starting. We're in the crux of the finish line of this, uh, busy election. And, uh, if you haven't corresponded with your registrars, um, since the opening day, Monday, they've had a really, really, uh, busy start right across our COG, right across the state. Um, just a couple of examples. Day one, day one in Haddam, 283 voters. Day one in Clinton, 566 voters. This is all, all early voting. And Essex, 301. Um, big numbers for small towns. The pattern I think they will see this week is the first few days heavy. Um, there's a lot of what we call voter anxiety. I gotta get in, get my vote in, and then it'll taper down, and then I think it's gonna have a strong finish. So, um, just my take on that. And, um, several towns did have problems with their, uh, new scanners. The scanners only had light use at the, uh, summer primary and the presidential preference primary, but now in heavy use, they were having some barcoding issues. So I know several had to go to Staples, get new scanners. Uh, some, the state has, uh, been contacted on some of the issues too with the scanners. So we're working through that. Um, and then from here, right till the 5th, they're just really, really, they're flat out every day with, um, the responsibilities.
Okay, Carol. Thank you. Any questions for Carol?
Um, Tony? Yeah, just, just as a comment, um, Carol and I have, have met. Uh, we're starting to talk about her, uh, contract renewal. Um, her two-year contract is, is up at the end of the year. So, um, I will be working with her to, uh, at the, on a draft contract to, to present to all of you, um, next month.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Carol. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And anything that comes up between now and November 5th, please just shoot me an email. Happy to help you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bye-bye.
All right, moving on, CLYNK Bag Drop Program. Bridgette, you're standing in.
Excellent. Uh, it says sharing is not turned on. I'm sharing a quick deck.
Eliza?
You should be good now.
Is everybody able to see this?
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much. Um, I met with Janice several weeks ago, and she invited me to attend this meeting. My name is Bridgette O'Brien, and I am the Chief Operating Officer of Clink. And Clink is an 18-year-old company that pioneered a very consumer-friendly, um, modality, um, to support citizens of states that, um, have bottle bills associated with them. Um, Clink, um, came onto the scene with a whole different paradigm. We realized that, um, the consumer who buys the beverage, um, containers consumes them, and then is in receipt of those empty beverage containers, um, want to do the right thing, but they will do the right thing if it's very convenient for them. So we developed a, a, a whole system and a technology to pu- support citizens as well as beverage manufacturers who pay for the bottle bill and food retailers who are obligated to take back at retail and create a very fast, easy, convenient solution um, that enables and encourages more and more people to recycle. And as all of you probably know, the state of Connecticut really has made great progress in modernizing its bottle bill. Um, and we are in the second phase of that modernization where the deposit went from five cents to 10 cents. Um, and you can imagine the, the amount of volume now that's coming through the system and the amount of volume that will come through the system. And we believe that with Bag Drop, and I'll explain what that is very briefly, um, that we will be able to encourage, um, you know, most of the citizens to, uh, recycle in an easy and convenient way. We're starting off with a five-store pilot with Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop is the largest grocery banner in the state of Connecticut. We've picked South, or they have picked Southington's, Cheshire, Bristol, Windsor, and Simsbury. Um, and we will be processing all of those containers, um, in the state of Connecticut. We're looking to, um, stand up this five-store pilot within the next month to two months. One of the things that we're working on now with these, um, five particular pilot locations is getting approval, zoning approval for the collection points, which I will, will show you in, in, in a moment. So what is Big Bag Drop? It is very, very easy. Um, it is an account-based program where citizens sign up. It's a free service, and the only thing that they pay for are the bags that are sold, will be sold inside of Stop &amp; Shop. These bags are made from 75% reclaimed plastic, and they have an opacity to them, so we can see what's inside them. So you sign up, you get your bags, and then you start, um, collecting your containers, whether they're plastic, glass, or aluminum. You don't have to source, separate them. You put all of your beverage, your redeemable beverage containers in a bag. Um, each bag has, um, a personalized tag, which, which basically unites the containers in that bag with you, your account. Um, you take the bag to a, to the collection point that will be in the parking lot of Stop &amp; Shop. You scan it, you open the door, which unlocks, your scan unlocks the door. And then we come and collect, um, on a daily basis. We pick up all the bags, and then we take them to our, our processing facility in Bristol. We, we, um, process all of those containers, um, through what is called a singulator. Um, you can see this picture now where, um, we scan the bag again. So all the containers that go on that singulator are associated with the consumer's account. Each one of those containers goes through a high-speed, um, camera array where we scan every single barcode. So that, that enables us to count the number of containers, and it also enables us to be able to know who is responsible on the beverage manufacturing or distributor side for paying the handling fee and reuniting the consumer with their, with their deposit. And all of this happens in a very high-speed way, um, very, very accurate and highly efficient. And that's why we're able to, to do this at scale. So our collection points are made from recycled non-food-grade plastic, and every aspect of this collection point has recyclable material. Um, and easy to transport, easy to set up in these parking lots, the Stop &amp; Shop parking lots. They're all, um, autonomous, meaning they are solar-powered as well as wind-powered if we have five to six days of, of no sunshine. Um, so they're really self-contained, um, you know, low-carbon footprint, which we, we always aim for. Um, so this, you're, you're seeing a picture right now of, of a unwrapped collection point, three-door collection point. Um, in this configuration, it's 20 feet. We can go up to 32 feet for very high-volume locations, and, and we anticipate plenty of high-volume locations. Um, and this is what they ultimately look like, beautifully designed. Um, their visual cues in the parking lots of food retailers. Um, and, and, and they're hard to miss, and so consumers can see that people are coming to this bottle-and-can redemption collection point, and in 15 seconds or less, they're able to drop multiple bags. And then again, we pick up those bags, we process them in our Bristol facility. We remand the deposit electronically, and then those deposit funds can be, um, withdrawn, um, inside the store, inside the food retailer. Over the 18 years that we've been in business, um, we are the fastest-growing modality where Bag Drop is offered. Um, we licensed our technology in Oregon. Um, Bag Drop now represents 50% of the overall, um, redemption and recycling, um, activity. We're, um, 26% of the volume in Maine, and we're growing in New York, and we've got a pilot going in Iowa. Um, when people, when citizens and consumers begin to use Bag Drop, it, it, it is a game changer. They don't go back. Uh, we call ourselves the fourth modality. You've got the traditional redemption center where they hand-count containers. You've got the reverse vending machine where the consumer stands in front of the machine and feeds it, um, individual container by individual container. And then you've got Bag Drop where you put all of your beverage containers in one bag. Um, 94% of people who use Clink prefer Bag Drop over all those other modalities. Um, 93% think it is a very positive feature offered by the retailer because the retailer is making it easy and very convenient, um, to recycle. Um, and 78% of Clinkers are extremely satisfied. We've done a net promoter score. Um, uh, we did a net promoter survey and, um, received a score of 75, which is considered striking distance, um, striking distance of world class. So this is an easy, convenient solution that is really intended to make it incredibly convenient and fun, um, for the consumer. So we translate all of the consumer's recycling behavior, um, into personalized So we translate all of the consumer's recycling behavior, um, into personalized sustainability. And environmentally metrics, so you know how you've reduced your carbon footprint. Um, you know how many containers you've, you've, um, recycled, and that gamification and that level of engagement. Is what makes Bag Drop incredibly popular, um, and, and, um, fast-growing. So I, I, I knew I only had ten minutes, so I kept this very, very, very brief, I wanted to leave room for, um, questions. I will make this deck available, I'll add a few more slides, and I'll put all of my contact information in it as well, so anybody can reach out to me.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. I have one question, where do you get the bags at Stop &amp; Shop?
Yes, inside the store.
Okay. Uh, anyone have any, uh, additional questions?
Tony, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would you ever consider making this available to put these units at like town transfer stations and run this through the town?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we would absolutely consider that.
Thank you.
Good, good question.
Yeah, very good question.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Bridget, really appreciate it, uh.
Thank, thank you, and I.
Sounds like a very, uh, uh, important program and makes it simplifies, uh, returning the, uh, the cans and the bottles.
Exactly. Thank you all, I'm gonna drop off and let you finish your meeting. Again, I really appreciate the invitation. And I encourage anybody, uh, if they wanna learn more, I am happy to, to come to you and spend more time. We're really excited to enter the state of Connecticut with Bag Drop.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, moving on, MPO business, I'll take a motion on the approval of the minutes from, uh, September twenty-fifth.
Don't move.
Motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
A second, Eric, uh, any, uh, discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, Rob, you're up, uh, twenty-five tip amendment, um, without objection. Uh, I'll take items, uh, B, uh, five B, one through seven. Okay, Rob, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, all right, sure, the first seven line items are all the same project, I will go through them, give a brief explanation and a quick summary at the end. Uh, this is for a project in Meriden and Middletown, it's on, uh, I ninety-one, six ninety-one and Route fifteen. Uh, it's project number seventy-nine, two forty, uh, uses NHPP, which is National Highway Performance Program Funds. Uh, CC means it is included in the air quality model. Uh, this is, uh, there's two different projects, there's a northbound and a southbound, these are all for the southbound project. Uh, the first four are existing line items in the current tip that are being revised, so I will go through those first. Uh, the first is an AC entry for construction in twenty-twenty-five, and this decreases the federal estimate from thirty-seven million. The second line item is an AC conversion for construction in twenty-twenty-six, and it decreases the estimate from forty-three million. Uh, number three is an AC conversion in twenty-twenty-seven and decreases the federal estimate from twenty-five-point-two million. And item number four is an AC conversion for construction in twenty-twenty-eight, which increases the federal estimate by thirteen million. These next three line items are new items in the tip. Uh, number five, um, is a new line item for an FYI AC conversion. Again, all using NHPP funding for forty-four-point-six million. Uh, number six is an AC entry for zero, uh, with, uh, changing the federal funding source from a performance program to the freight program. And number seven, uh, let's see here, uh, is an AC conversion for construction and FYI again for the freight program for forty-four-point-three million. So all this basically boils down to, is really no change in the scope of the project, there's no change in the overall cost of the project. Uh, we're just taking, reducing the federal funds in twenty-five by thirty-two million, twenty-six by forty-four million, twenty-seven by twenty-three-point-two million. Uh, for a total of ninety-six-point-two million. And then increasing the same NHPP for, by twenty-five million and twenty-eight. Thirty-five-point-seven million in FYI, which is twenty-nine or beyond the current scope of the tip. And then adding another phase for thirty-five-point-five million of freight in FYI. So it's basically the same, ninety-two-point-six million, just in the outer years of the program instead of the inner years of the program.
Any, uh, questions on items, uh, one through seven?
I just have a curiosity question because. Families from Meriden, I've gone through that interchange all the time. Where, why, why is River Cog taking the lead on this versus whichever cog Meriden is part of, um?
Yeah, it's, it's a multi-regional project, most of it is in Meriden, if you do, if you, if you're familiar with the area, really in Middletown, it only covers the area from roughly where the, uh. Uh, rest area is south of the Meriden line, obviously, most of it's, uh, farther down in Meriden, where six ninety-one and fifteen all meet up with ninety-one. Uh, so basically both regions do have to, uh, you know, adopt the amendments.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none, uh, I will, uh, take a motion on, uh, five B, one through seven.
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? Hearing of seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, Rob, uh, five B eight, please.
Hey, number eight is a project in East Hampton on the Airline Trail, this is project number forty-one, one twenty-three. Uses, uh, congressionally-directed spending funds, is not in the air quality model. And this is, uh, basically for construction for the remaining gap in the Airline Trail, this is for the, uh. The, uh, wooden boardwalk, uh, to connect the gap in, the current gap in the trail, uh, it's for the construction phase in twenty, in twenty-twenty-six. For, uh, one-point-seven-five million, um, eighty-twenty federal-local split, and this is a new project.
Okay, thanks, Rob, uh, I'll take a motion to approve five B eight.
So moved.
Second, second, further discussions?
I'm just like to say.
Excuse me? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, other transportation, anything else, Rob?
Uh, not too much, we'll have, we'll be, uh, setting up our public information meeting on the, uh, Loop Trail Project, um, around the holidays. Uh, similarly, we will be having a SS4A public meeting probably around the same time. Uh, we will also have the, uh, consultant, which is FHI, come into our, uh, MPO meeting next month to provide a brief update. Uh, currently, we are working on some stakeholder meetings with the towns, which we've done a few, and we have a few more to schedule, so. That's about it on those two projects.
And how's the traffic lights coming in Middletown?
That I haven't heard in a little while, about three weeks ago, we did meet with DOT, and they basically provided us an overview where everything stands. I think they had met with Middletown, as well as some of the other towns recently as well. Um, as far as I know, they are just still in, uh, in design at this point.
Okay, any questions for Rob? Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, update on the, uh, Transit District, uh, Joe, are you handling it?
I'll have Brendan cover it.
Sure thing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, do that, yeah, so, uh, excitingly, I'll start with the brand-new announcement, which is, uh, on the seventh of October, we launched our tap-and-ride program, which is. On our fixed route buses, you, uh, riders can now pay with the debit or credit card, there's a little balderer device right next to the fare box, so people can go up and. Tap their debit card, their credit card, um, Apple Pay, Google Pay, you know, mobile wallet, as, works as well with this. Um, it's a pretty cool sort of technology, it's a same technology you might see at any other store where you can pay, you know, grocery store, coffee shop, you just tap your card. Same technology, now it's on our buses, so. That makes transit more convenient and makes folks, you know, don't have to rely on cash or tickets, they can use, you can just tap and ride, it's very exciting. Um, it's on all of our bus, our fixed route buses. As well as, um, several routes in CT Transit Meriden. The reason being, this is a statewide project, so, um, we, we wanna basically study, um, how do the transfers work between the two systems, you know? Cause how it should work is riders can tap their card in Meriden and then get a free transfer on us and tap their card, so. All the benefits of, of the service are tied to that individual card or payment method, so. Uh, there are also fare capping, um, methods as well, so you'll basically always get the best deal. So if you tap twice in a day, you'll get a daily pass. If you tap, let's say, uh, if you spend fifty dollars, two dollars and twenty-five cents in a month with us. Let's say on day twenty-one, you'll, you won't have to pay for transfers for the month, so, um, there's lots of, um, savings there as well, which is great. So it's a very successful program, um, it, it's, we just launched it, and if, if successful, uh, could be looked at, uh, further for statewide implementation. With the end goal being, you know, a seamless, uh, transfer experience for all riders across the state. Um, so that's exciting, and then, uh, we also launched our, uh, Extra Mile Expansion and Search Expansion, uh, in late May. I was, they've been going well, we're seeing good ridership on all the new weeknight, Saturday night, and Sunday services. Um, and same thing with Extra Mile, we expanded into East Hampton, Madison and Guilford, and Middletown. Uh, we started Middletown recently in August, August thirtieth, and that's been very, that's, the ridership's been, uh, very good, very fast, which is great. Come on strong, Madison Guilford is still, still building steadily, and East Hampton's, uh, has some dedicated users, but we're definitely looking to try and. Buff that up a little bit as well, but, um, we've met with, um, some folks in East Hampton, the, uh, social services coordinator, the senior center's been great, so. We're gonna still work there to try and spread the word more, but we have, definitely have some dedicated riders who do use it frequently as well. And then finally, I'll just mention our bus shelter project, which is exciting, another DOT program. We have five bus shelters, we're looking to install in Middletown. Um, and so we're just waiting on DOT contractors to give us some final drawings to, to show the city for, for approval, so. We're waiting on those things, but that'd be nice to get some bus shelters in Middletown. Uh, those are some of the big things, I said, missing anything, Joe, anything to add?
Uh, just to, uh, welcome both Portland and East Hampton. The Transit District officially joined in the past couple of months, so we're, we now have, uh, thirteen member towns.
Okay, does anyone, um, have any questions for either Brendan or, uh, Joe?
This isn't a question, but, you know, on the tap-and-ride, that was all across every city that I visited last month. Was using it, and it was seamless, so, you know. I, I think it'll be a big success just because of how. It works, like, that's the best thing I can say about it, it just, it works and it's easy.
It absolutely simplifies things, and, uh, Connecticut is on track to be the first state to try and implement statewide.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Thank you very much for the update. Uh, moving on to, uh, cog business, uh, Sam. Uh, isn't six A in conflict with, uh, nine?
Um, so, the.
Shouldn't we hold off?
Um, yeah, we can hold off on this, um, uh, the way I explained in the email is that we, um, that, um. Uh, one of the members suggested adding a, an executive session, um, and on the revised agenda, we added it as item nine. Um, so, uh, so the members could have a discussion in executive session if they so wished. But if.
All right, in which case.
That was necessary, um, you also don't need to go into executive session.
Yeah, but if we do, I don't, I'd rather get the other stuff out of the way first.
Okay, then let's, so, so. Then why don't you, uh, move to.
Yeah, without objection, we'll just move, um, A to make sure it's covered under nine. Um, is everyone all right with that?
So just to be clear, Tony, we come back out of executive session and deal with the contract?
Well, we would have to come out of executive session and vote on the contract anyways.
Right, I'm just confirming that that's your intent.
Yeah, my intent is that, uh, six A, um, would be moved and covered under nine. In case there's, uh, a counselor that wishes to go into executive session.
Okay.
To discuss it, so, uh, to make it official, can I get a motion to, uh, move six A, uh, to be combined with, uh, nine?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, Kevin, you're up, uh, the resolution for, uh, GIO parcel and CAMA.
Go ahead and, uh, share that in case folks don't have it directly in front of them. All righty, so we're really, really short and sweet, uh, the, the state GIO is, uh, looking to spend, uh, a pot of money specifically to increase the. Parcel and Kama match rate for when we, we collect data from, from all of you, uh, annually, uh, from your assessors. And, uh, send it up to the state so they can combine it into a state layer. Um, but they're running into issues, um, mainly stemming from the fact that all of the, the systems are ever so slightly different in each town. Uh, they don't have the same fields necessarily, the same names. So it's, it's, uh, an effort to try to use state funds to bridge the gap there and make those changes. Um, there, there is a little bit of, of unknown in there, uh, in that it does require, uh, working with your assessors. To get some of these changes done, whether or not that's gonna be possible with current vendors. Or if we need to seek an outside vendor to add additional support, uh, we're not quite sure yet without scoping that out. Uh, but ultimately, what the GIO is looking for right now is just a simple resolution to say that we are accepting to spend said money. Um, and I think I have, yeah, it is here. Um, so they're, they're looking to offer the cog as a whole, two-hundred-and-five-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for parcel and Kama improvements grants. Um, and that is to our discretion, uh, discretion of the cog to distribute. Um, but it's not entirely our decision, the state is gonna provide us with a list of the ones they want us to focus on. And that, that is to meet a specific match rate. Um, so towns that are, are at a lower percentage will, will receive more of these funds just because they have a specific goal to reach. Um, anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
So, and I apologize, Tony, I wasn't at the executive meeting, so I, we, you may have discussed it here, but. So, are we, so the cog is getting a grant, and are we anticipating that that is. Likely going to be then re-granted, so to speak, sub-granted to, uh, municipalities, or is this gonna be a cog project?
Right, that, that would be the ideal scenario, um, because, uh, all of you already have set vendors in these spaces. So to, to go out and find a, a tertiary vendor to then work with them seems, seems excessive. Um, the, the only case where we, we would be seeking additional support from a third-party vendor. Is if, say for instance, your assessor's office just doesn't have the staff, manpower, time to, to look at a certain issue. Um, but otherwise, we would like to work directly with your GIS vendors particularly. Um, and that would probably be smoothest if we. Offered you the funds to offer them than to have the cog have to go into a separate contract with your vendors.
And, and, and just to add to that, I think, I think the way that it would work out is that we would, we would work up a scope of work. Uh, uh, and with your, with your vendor, um, but ultimately, this would just be, uh, additional on to your existing relationship with your existing vendor. And then we would, uh, we would, we would pay the town to pay the, to pay the vendor.
Okay, either, either or both of your, um, assessing vendor and your GIS vendor.
Yes.
Yeah. What's the, do we know a timeline here? I mean, some of us are probably in or just finishing revale, or might not be in anywhere in that sequence, so I'm just wondering what the timeline is, do you know?
The funds are intended to be spent by year-end twenty-twenty-six.
Calendar or fiscal?
Calendar.
Okay.
So we have, we, we have time.
And does, sorry, quick question.
Yeah.
Does, does this also address the issue where this information isn't matching up so that everyone's following a new protocol so that this doesn't happen going forward?
Correct, yeah, that, that, well, that's, that's the intent, um, the intent is to literally fix, um, issues with Kama and parcel mismatch. Issues with Kama and parcel mismatch. Primarily, the biggest offender and the reason there are certain towns that are are in need of more help than others. Is the condo issue. When you have a multi-unit parcel that is trying to reach multiple. Pieces of assessors database, but there isn't a one-to-one relationship in the parcels. But beyond that, then it's the the missing information, which which. Their their priority is to get that match rate up so that when they do their analysis, they don't have extra data on the table that they don't know what to do with.
Okay, and then if new condos or subdivisions or what have you are created. Are they done so in a way that this that it matches up?
Hopefully. Yeah, yeah, that that would be the, so so hopefully this this will enforce a standard. So that going forward, new additions such as that scenario would would follow suit, and then you wouldn't run into the issue of. Say ten years down the road, now you gotta go back and do this project all over again. Ultimately, they're focused on on the the issues that are that presently exist. But again, that that'll that'll really depend on the assessor's office and the. How much the the vendors themselves pay attention as we're making these fixes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I know that we use time bond and E Kama, is is there like? A breadth of vendors that were kind of trying to? I use the word sanctify even though it's not a word, but you know. Get that sign that kind of sense across of, you know. Make everything match, like, are we that, you know, disparate in who we choose in across the region, or is this, you know? Cause I'm just thinking logistics of. If we're all, if each town is trying to do the same thing versus the Rivercock, kind of getting back to David's question of. Who's doing this Rivercog or the towns, and if we're just replicating work. I that's that's me thinking logistically, but I could be off base here.
Well, that that is one issue that came up when they were discussing the plan with us, most of our towns share. So there's, I believe there's four Kama vendors across the region, two primary ones. And there's, I wanna say. Three or four GIS vendors as well, so for many of the towns, we're working with the with the same same vendors. That propagates throughout the state, so the question did come up, okay, we're we're all gonna come at these vendors all at once. And expect them to do this giant pile of work. So hopefully we'll we'll get a a leg up on that. And be first in line. But they are aware that because of the the shared vendor situation that that timeframe may need to be used.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will take a motion to approve the resolution and authorize the secretary to sign and submit.
So moved.
Motion second, please.
All second, Martha.
Martha, thank you, any further discussion? You're in to see none, all in favor, I. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. Demis, Sam?
Yes, so Suzie and I and our attorney Steve Menick met with the Demis rep to regional emergency planning team. On Friday to discuss the future of Rivercock hosting of the Demis region. For for us and for the New Haven area, and what we learned was the response to the letter. That we sent to Demis was Demis was now looking for a new fiduciary. We just, we discussed with them, you know, some of our concerns, and we brought our attorney specifically. To talk about how some of this work could be streamlined. The amount of homeland security funding that that Connecticut and the the nation is receiving has been declining over the years. This all came about after nine eleven and and costs are going up to administer the money. And, you know, we're pushing the state to reform and rethink how they do Demis, just in light of the declining funding. One thing that we did get a commitment out of Demis was to to work with our attorney and coming up with. A replacement for the MOU process or or try to understand, you know, how that MOU process could be streamlined and made easier. Collecting the MOUs from from thirty CEOs or thirty seven CEOs is an expensive process. It costs about between ten and fifteen thousand hours just to get the signatures of all the CEOs, many of which you don't even sign. We also, just looking at the MOU with our attorney, the MOU says that it's not in effect until all the signatories are signed. Yeah, we have Suzie chasing down people like the mayor of Meriden. And but we're already spending the money, so how is that MOU even ineffective that Mayor Meriden hasn't signed, so? Ideally, you would have something much more long-term, a multi a multi-year. Agreement with the towns in the Demis region, so you wouldn't need a signature, actually, it's three signatures every year. Because we have three concurrent grants going on every year. They have made some leniency that if the CEO doesn't change, it's the process a little bit easier. But it seems silly that you would have to do all this extra bureaucratic paperwork that doesn't add to the mission. When when we do have other things such as. Oh, let's see. And anyway, yeah, Suzie Beckman just forwarded me an email from the deputy commissioner of Demis. And, you know, he's looking into just the statutory requirements, so we we told the rep that. You know, if we can get the price down and some other work down, like, we will still host the Demis region, which I think they're, which I think is their preference. Nevertheless, you know, I don't I don't think they're gonna find many others to be the fiduciaries, so we'll see what they find, but. There is a consultant who who does the work on the behalf of the of Eastern Connecticut, Demis Region Four, which Lyme and Old Lyme are a member of. And that is, his name is Mark Paquette, he is retired cog director. So I I I don't know how many people out there who who have experience doing this are 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 willing to take it up. He obviously did this work while he was employed as a cog director, so he's just continued to do it in his retirement, but. So we're going to continue to meet with Demis, meet with the rep. And I thought this was a worthwhile use of our attorney to spend some money on him to try to try to work with Demis on. Streamlining some of these processes and forcing the state to take a look at at how these things could be done differently. Considering the money is not is not there anymore, the money is declining, so we need to do business differently. Just talking to Suzie, you know, you know, she sees a future where you could have two full-time people managing. The fiduciary work for the entire for the entire state. Just be and that and those two people would have would would be able to cover everything. And that would keep this in in proportion with the declining funding. You know, having having five separate fiduciary entities. Laura Francis brought up that, you know, the the staff person over at Capital Region makes. You know, you know, this salary makes about a hundred and thirty thousand, but they only get seventy thousand for the. For the for for her job, which is only Demis, and that that doesn't even include overhead, so. Yeah, so that, so I think there's a, we're pushing back in that. The subsidy to Demis would be less problematic if it was just if we were subsidizing for our towns. But unfortunately, that's not the case, we're subsidizing for the entire SubCentral region. Laura Francis is willing to work with us on that, but it's, but I think it's, there's a bigger issue here, so. I think I think our meeting on Friday was really was productive, and I think our letter has been productive, so we'll see, we'll keep you informed as to how this develops.
Sam, if I'm misunderstanding you, it sounds like they tried to push back on us.
Oh, oh, yeah, they're pushing back on saying that they're looking, gonna look for another fiduciary, I.
Why don't we let them go look and see what they come up?
Oh, oh, we are. I I just feel that this hot potato is not gonna be escaping us anytime soon, because I don't, I don't, I don't see who's gonna take it. To be completely honest. And, you know, they're they're they be, Demis has become reliant on on the host cogs subsidizing this work. And and if there needs to be a subsidized for these home, uh, really, and essentially a non-federal match for these federal grants. Then let's acknowledge that and let's come up with a fair and transparent way to pay for that. It's not fair for our seventeen towns to pay. For the benefit of only ten of our towns and twenty of towns and other other regions. It it, you know, if 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 there's if there's excess cost to administer these grants. Let's come up with a fair way of 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 sharing that, and and that needs to come from Demis.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, Sam, stay on top of it, keep us posted, thank you.
And and also, Mr. Chair, we have Nicole Velardi from Demis Region Two, I just noticed that she's here, so I don't know if you have anything to say on this.
I'm, I'll just have a couple of notes, so we did have a steering committee meeting on Friday and board transparency. In speaking with the R E P T and the steering committee leadership, they wanted to explore some options, so as Sam indicated, that's exactly what we're doing. No commitments have been made, and as Sam said, you know, we are willing to work with Rivercog and. You know, see if or what type of an agreement can can be made. The R E P T is extremely appreciative to all of the years of support that Rivercog has shown as the fiduciary. You know, we know that Suzie puts in a lot of work and we're very grateful for that, as well as Torrance before her, so thank you for all of that. But but as Sam said, you know, Rivercog had come and asked for an additional increase of money for the fiduciary fee. Which Demis could not support as the regions are taking a ten percent cut in funding this year. So we're just trying to navigate and and figure out the best solution for all the stakeholders. That allows us to most effectively support the R E P T and the mission of regional preparedness.
Okay, thank you, any, any one have any questions?
And and I'll just say that, like, you know, talking to Laura Francis from SubCentral. It the the these are important tasks and and we're not, you know, and I don't want to trivialize this, you know, the the. Home and the emergency preparedness grants that we receive to outfit our first responders are important. And it's just a matter of how we fairly and transparently pay for pay for these, the administration of these grants, so. And so we'll we'll see if we can work with them as of finding a new fiduciary or find any changes that can that can be made to make. If they make it possible that we can stay within our budget.
Okay, Sam, thank you.
Thank you.
R E D C update, Eliza?
So it's actually, I'm gonna give it, you know, I wasn't, when I saw that on on the agenda, I wasn't sure what the update was, but I saw Suzie. Quickly this morning and she she gave me her written update, so I'll give that for her. So the items on here is is that the Millsix County Revolization Commission. Has been speaking to Lyme and Old Lyme about inviting them to join. This is a great opportunity to the to broaden the capabilities of N C M C R C to serve our entire region. And some of the things that the Millsix County Revolization Commission will work on is land bank options, infrastructure development and business support. M C R C has received some new money and, you know, and. A growing M C R C to 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 match the lines of the region, I think is is a good step for for the Revolization Commission. The next, the next items are. Suzie's been working with the Millsix County Chamber of Commerce to develop economic development training. For volunteer town commissions, this would be economic development commissions and planning and zoning commissions and ZBAs. You know, obviously, these volunteers may or may not have any official training on economic development, so. Making sure that we come up with some some sort of resources and training for them, I think will be very helpful and and supportive of those commissioners. And the last item that she has discussed with Suzie regarding a role for the Regional Economic Development Commission. Is to investigate the potential of sharing a a grant rider between the chamber and Rivercog, such the Rivercog towns. This has come up a number of times from CEOs, the need for grant writing support. And I think this is, this is a good way of sharing the cost. And then the final item under Regional Economic Development Commission is there has not been any update on our regional economic development district. Application to U S E D A, I do think that, I think Suzie has been in touch with Julia. Representative Courtney's office about this, and we'll continually continue to ask our representatives in Washington to put. So be checking in with E D A on this to try to push it along to get approved. So I think that's that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any, any questions for Sam? Okay, thank you very much, Sam. Marco, in base of species?
Yep, good morning, everyone. I want to let you know that the cost share program, letter of intent was submitted to Army Corps. For for that fifty fifty program. And I also want to let you know, as you remember, part of that motion was that if the state. Applied for that program also that we would be happy to join with them. And the state did submit the a letter of intent also a couple of weeks later, so. We'll see what Army Corps comes back with about all of that, but we haven't heard anything to date. There's a Massachusetts meeting tomorrow, it's the first one with the Department of Environmental Services concerning. Northern extent of the hydralate infestation, so I'll be attending that and. I'll let you know what what their outlook is on the Massachusetts side, because obviously, everything that's. Is that what happens up there affects us down there, especially when it comes to the hydralate infestation. And I also just wanted to give you some heads up about the water chestnut grant that we have, that we've been working with the last couple of seasons. We still have that to work with for next summer. In talking with Paula, we have some money left over in that budget from this season, so we have a request into DEEP. To find out about switching some categories of the budget. To help support. The the Marina and some possible thoughts about debris removal, because that was actually one of the. Not a problem, but something that we could do better and easier next season as far as debris removal goes. Because we did have quite a bit of it last year, and we're hoping to maybe. Find out about being able to put a dumpster somewhere that can then be collected and and put back and. Build up again and make it much more convenient for us to get rid of the the water chestnut that is pulled. So we'll let, I'll let you know more about that next month. If we, after we get some answers back from DEEP, if they'll give us another year extension or or what the the. The program will let us do.
Okay, Marco, if I may ask, how did our program go this summer?
It went, it went well, it was the first year to really go through a season. The year before was the the whole flooding issue. So we found out that as for scheduling purposes that we really need to schedule around the tide, that the best time to go. Is two hours before and two time, two hours after high tide. So as you know, that moves throughout the day, we and it's different from week to week, so. Sometimes it's in the morning, sometimes it's in the afternoon. We had quite a bit more water chestnut. Last season. I think due to the flooding from the year previous previously, and it really got pushed up into the back of our coves. Into the very shallow areas, and with the the hydrala really comes on strong at the. You know, into August, so it makes, it it's a lot of work getting back in there. With all of the hydrala congesting the the coves, so it does, most of the work needs to be done in July and August. So it, we just really need to work with that, so finding staff to do that is will be interesting. For next year, we do have our, the the two gentlemen that we worked with this year. Um, so hopefully they'll stay on for next year, but it is a very variable schedule. So there's lots of things to deal with, um, as far as staff hours go and when people will go. Can go to do the work. So you have to find people with flexible schedules. And people that are willing to work hard because it is hard work, physical work. So those are our two challenges, I think, with the, the water chestnut program. So far, so good. We're holding our own, but. There is a lot of it out there. Um, that flooding really did spread it. But they also, with the hydrola program, some of the source, um, water chestnut was up in the, um, Bikini Cove in the Mattabasset. And so Bikini Cove with the hydrola treatment that they did this year really did seem to knock water chestnut down. Um, so that, they, they will be treating that area again next year. So that. Bodes well for the future for us. And also in the Mattabasset, um. Uh, John Hall from the Jonas Center for Earth, uh, for Earth and Art, um. They had a program in the Mattabasset this year and they were, um, successful in really, um, combating. The, the spread out hydrola. But there are still two big patches acres, about seven or eight acres of water chestnut in there that we're hoping to treat. Uh, next year, um, but we have to wait for some, uh, uh. A, a report in the spring from a herpetologist about, um, the North Atlantic, um. There's a frog in there, an endangered species frog. And we get the, uh, the, the okay from, from him that. The treatment won't affect that, then we'll be, be able to treat. And, um, so that will be helpful too and bode well for the future. The other thing about the Mattabasset is that the, uh, Army Corps might be, um. Treating there for hydrola next year. They're just beginning to put their program together. So that also bodes well for water chestnut. Um, given what happened in Bikini Cove this year. So there are some real positive results.
So the hydrola treatment can kill the trappa?
That it seems that, that had a really great result up in Bikini Cove. So. Yeah, we're keeping our fingers crossed. The, the, um, pilot projects for the hydrola. Went extremely well this year, um, and really combated the hydrola. But left the, um, the native species, the elogras and things, um, they, they came through it very well. So. Yeah, a lot of positive results in this summer, but water chestnut was a lot of work this year. Um, and you never know, uh, what, what, what a year is gonna bring. Um, really depends on the conditions on the river, the weather. Um, and we know that how variable that all is with low water this year. If we have this drought last year, I mean, next year, if it's still, um, you know, it's going on, it will make, um. Getting back into the code more difficult because of low water. So.
Okay.
Very adaptable.
Thank you for the update, um. Uh, the mitigation plan update?
Yeah, I want to let you know that, um, we did finally get word from, um. From Demis that the grant will be coming through. So we're a couple of months behind schedule from the last time that we did the update. Um, we got the grant, I think in August and we really started going, um, with a consultant, um, in December. So I think that, um, now that we have word that we're, we are getting the grant. I just want to, uh, let you know that the G I S committee, the Regional G I S committee, which all of you or your designee. Um, is on, um, that will probably start that, uh, I would say. February or March, pending when we actually, uh, get official word from Demis. That we can, uh, start looking for a consultant. And I think one of them, I just wanted to let you guys all know that one of the major duties of, of being on that. Committee is to have the three meetings throughout the planning process, uh, which we usually have after the cog meetings. Um, and also very important function for the natural hazard mitigation plan are the two municipal meetings that we will have. With town staff and whoever else you would like to attend that meeting to go over, um, the projects in your town. Um, past and present and future. But so getting those, um, meetings together in a timely fashion with town staff is, uh, critical to the success of a planning process.
Thank you, Marlo. Um. And finally, uh, the land trust update?
Yeah, uh, let's see, we had a meeting with the National Park Service yesterday to plan for the second workshop for the conservation plan. Um, that we're working on with them, um, that went very well. The, as, uh, I think last, uh, meeting. Let me know that the first meeting went very well. Um, we. Uh, we need to have our annual meeting in December for the land trust and. Um, I want to let you guys know that, um, we need one more board member if everyone stays on in their positions, but we do have an empty position. It would be great to have, uh, First Blackman or their designee, um, on the board. Uh, we have Jim Irish from Middletown, um. I mean, from Middlefield as a representative, um, but so it'd be great to have one more. First selectmen. So please think about that. And Joe Semalas from Middletown is the, uh, president right now and. He'd like to see a presentation on the Hydrola project, um, from Army Corps for our annual meeting and I. I want to know, um, if any of you are interested in having something like that. I don't know how we would time that with all of you, but. Would you be interested in a presentation from them?
Um. Yeah, possibly, uh. Go ahead and set it up with Sam and if Sam feels it's, uh, worth our while, go ahead and fit it in, Sam.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Marlo. Anybody have any questions on any items that, uh, Marlo touched on? Excuse me. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, regional housing, Eliza?
Hi, good morning. I'm standing in for Megan who's in Paris. Um.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. She's in Paris and Janice is in Greece.
She is, yeah, they, uh. I feel like the rest of us deserve some sort of European vacation when they come back, but.
Why do you should point out still in Paris?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's celebrating her wedding anniversary and her first trip away from the kids.
Oh.
In that case. We'll, we'll, we'll let it go this time.
She did text me yesterday that, um, she was giving a brewery tour, a lecture on planning. So. She's still working. Um.
Maybe we'll get a, maybe we'll get a brewery then in, um, in, uh, Middlesex County. Go ahead, Eliza.
Um, so the, the Regional Housing Committee continues to work on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or the RENA, as we're calling it. Um, you may remember that the RENA is a methodology that we are creating to help determine a regional number of housing units needed. Um, to accommodate our population over the next ten years. Um, emphasis on planning tool only for the RENA. Uh, we're in the process right now of narrowing down some of the subjective inputs to round out the equation for determination of needed units. Um, yesterday afternoon, we had a really great, long meeting in which the committee really showed how hard they're thinking about formulating this equation in the RENA. Um. Everybody's been putting in a lot of, uh, time and work on this and it's been really nice to see. So the hope is the methodology will be nailed down by the end of the year, at which time the committee will create a report, um, for the cog.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Eliza? Thank you, Eliza. Good job standing in.
Thanks.
Um, Sam, do you have anything, uh, for, uh, for the council?
Yes, I do. So I have the financial report. Um. As of September thirtieth, the council had completed three months of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And overall spending is within the parameters of the adopted, uh, three point two million dollar budget. The dues and subscription and professional development has already reached forty-seven percent of the budget. Um, uh, but, uh, I'm sure that that will be covered by, uh, other item, uh, other line items if we do go over. Um, but we're not over yet. Um, as of September thirtieth, our, uh, State Treasurer's Investment Fund account totaled. Uh, one million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, uh, uh, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the Liberty checking account balance is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, a large, uh, electronic deposit has just been received in Liberty Bank at the end of the month and was transferred within days to the stiff account. Um, yeah, this, uh, we did investigate, Paula and I did investigate the possibility of, of, of maybe investing some of our reserves in a C D. And if that would, uh, that would, uh, bring, uh, bring any additional interest, but, uh, considering where the stiff has been, uh, been on interest. The stiff was a better deal with more flexibility. So, um, so, um, uh, the state treasurers, they're, they're doing a good job, at least with the step. So that's my, that's my, uh, financial report.
Okay, uh, anything on finance? All right, I have nothing, uh, to add at this time. So does anyone have any other business for the good of the council?
I think all that's left is, uh, uh, is the item, uh, for the renewal of my contract, so.
Uh, in your packet, we'll move on to nine now. In your packet, there was a memo. From the executive committee. You had a chance to, uh, read it along with Sam's, uh, contract. The memo pretty much says everything. It's out in the open, uh, as a result of being in the packet. Um, we can discuss it openly since it is in the packet and. Or we can go into executive, uh, session. Your pleasure. Anyone have a thought?
Since nobody's jumping on executive session, let's just roll.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's do this in open session.
So, um, the executive committee, uh, met and we went over, uh. Uh, Sam's contract with, uh, with Sam and then Sam was asked to, uh, leave. And, uh, the one item that Sam did express, uh, that, uh, he. Uh, was looking for was to raise the contribution that we make, um. Into his, uh, uh. His retirement plan and, uh, presently it's at six percent. And the executive committee decided that we would recommend to the full council, uh, an increase up to nine percent. Um, all other items in the contract remain the same except for, uh, it's a three-year contract. And the update with salaries. Any, any questions? Okay. Um, with that, if everybody's in agreement, you had a chance to review the memorandum, um, along with Sam's contract. I will take a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Carl?
Second.
Dave? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, congratulations, Sam. Um. We appreciate the job you do for us and, uh. We, uh, just wanted to express that. I did.
Thank you very much.
Um. With that. We have nothing left, so I will take a motion to adjourn unless someone has an item they want to bring forward. Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dave, second by Carl. All in favor? Aye. And nobody's opposed, so everybody have a great day and stay safe. We'll see ya.
Bye.
Everybody, bye.